I am calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Thursday, February 16, 2023. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members in persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Steve DeCoursey?
Here.
Eric Helmiz?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Ashley Meyer?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a fully remote format, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed into law on July 17, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31, 2023. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom. It is being recorded, and it's also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Nova Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by a roll call, and that note vote will pretty much be the vote to adjourn. So OML requires that when a meeting in which a quorum of select work members is gathered for a discussion, then that meeting must be recognized as a formal meeting on the Select Board. That will be the case tonight until this meeting ends or until one of my two colleagues, in the case that he will depart the meeting. At that point, I will take a motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting. After adjournment of the meeting, it can continue, just not as a formal Select Board meeting. You know, so we're scheduled for two hours. You know, I probably have until 10 o'clock before I really have to end things, because I have an eight o'clock meeting, an eight o'clock long-range planning meeting in the morning. So with that, we're just going to go right to a presentation by my colleagues, Steve DeCoursey. Steve?
Great. Thank you very much, Len, and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. And I also want to thank Chief Flaherty, who was with us tonight, and she has participated in a number of meetings and had a number of discussions with her, with the town manager, with Officer Rato, and I will get into that a little bit as part of the presentation. So I have about six or seven slides that I just want to run through. We all know the existing conditions are that all-night parking is prohibited between 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. on public streets. If you go to the next page, Ashley.
Sorry, I'm working on it.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry, I'm trying to escape this, and it won't let me keep going.
Okay, I'll start talking, and we can.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna try and play with it.
Okay. The source of this authority in the Select Board is by state law, we have the ability to control public streets and vehicle parking on streets through our traffic rules and orders, which are published on the town's website and which have been amended a few times over the years. That's where the all-night parking ban is published, and it just applies to public streets. It doesn't apply to private ways. And there are also hardship exemptions that are part of the traffic rules and orders. And over the years, we have granted some hardship waivers. Since 2008, the Select Board has received 55 requests for hardship waivers exemptions. We've granted 28 and declined 27 of them. There is criteria that has been applied over the years for that, and that's where we find ourselves. This is the next slide in terms of what's going on in other communities. We're just gonna have to roll with this as we find it up there. As part of our discussions, and we can leave it on that for right now, we looked at other communities, communities that we compare ourselves to for other financial reasons. And you can see, most of the communities do have year-round parking bans. There are several there that have winter parking bans, and I'll just use Watertown as an example. Watertown has a ban on overnight parking throughout the year, but they have a policy of not enforcing the ban between April and November, or between May 1 and December 1. I put Medford and Somerville on there as having permit programs. Cambridge also has a permit program. I did not add them. As far as the other year-round parking ban communities, there are some communities that charge a fee to provide for off-street parking. I don't have that listed, but that just gives you a sense of some of the communities we compare ourselves to. The next slide will just list some of the concerns that we have received from residents concerning the current bylaw. They include uneven enforcement, and what we mean by that is there are some neighborhoods where the police department will receive calls from people who call in neighbors who are parking in the street. There are other areas of town through routine patrols that may be ticketing, but the areas that receive the phone calls, if you look at the history of this program, those people have received more tickets. There is a potential hardship clearly for tenants in multifamily properties. We heard from a number of tenants who, while parking may be available, it wasn't provided as part of their tenancy. There are some other unique type issues. These are not all of the concerns with the current bylaw. We just listed a couple there. If you can go to the next slide, Ashley. Okay, now here's the history of why we're here today, at least this Select Board. Back in 2021, Sylvia Dominguez from Precinct 4 had put forward two resolutions, Articles 87 and 88. They dealt with overnight parking in Precinct 4 and daytime parking in Precinct 4. And in talking with her prior to the 2021 town meeting, she agreed to pull the resolutions from the warrant or from a vote at the warrant. In exchange for that, I agreed to put it on for discussion at the Select Board and to talk about her concerns and other parking concerns throughout the town. From that point forward, we've had neighborhood meetings. Len and I had a Select Board forum back in June of 2022, where we spoke about some concepts about what we may be looking to do as far as a pilot, and it has been on a number of agendas at Select Board meetings. Town manager has had meetings with Chief Flaherty, Chief Kelly, the Fire Department, and the DPW Director, Mike Rata marker. We've received feedback from them, and what has evolved is a proposed pilot that we have not taken a final vote on. Len had, I don't think, gratefully wanted to have another forum to receive feedback before we take a final vote. But if you go to the next slide, Ashley, that's the Article 87 and 88, the two resolutions that Sylvia had put forward. The comment to Article 87, and there was an identical comment to Article 88, is that we're recommending no action because parking regulations is within our jurisdiction on the Select Board. However, we're committed to having further discussions, and that's what's happened here since that time. And I will say, even prior to 2021, in doing some research on this issue, the issue of overnight parking seems to come up every few years, at least every few years, maybe every five or six years, in terms of people looking to either expand the program, looking for waivers. I went back and did a little research on what was published in The Advocate, and we used to have a weekly newspaper that covered things pretty closely. It came up in 1971. It came up in 1986. In 2006, there were discussions with the Select Board about whether the parking ban is eliminated or if the waiver program is expanded. I don't know if Phil Goff is here tonight, but he was here at one of our prior meetings. He wrote a letter to The Advocate in 2006 about the parking ban, so it's been around for a long time. If you go to the next slide, Ashley. Okay, so from the discussions that we've had, from the forum, this is where we are as a board right now. Again, we have not had a final vote on the proposed pilot program, but I walked through these various points. If we're going to go forward with a pilot program, there is consensus on the Select Board that it will be town-wide. There's consensus that it will be for an approximate six-month period. We wanted more than one season. There was concern particularly from the DPW Director on having a pilot program that extends through the winter. So we've talked about approximately from May to November on that. It will be on one side of the street. We had a lot of feedback from people, some people who were in favor of having a pilot program, but were concerned about how many people might be parking on the street, and if it could be limited for public safety purposes, and also just for the number of cars. The board has, it right now is in agreement with that. The next thing is that it will be a permit program if we go forward with this. So this will not be a lifting of the ban in its entirety so that anybody can park in the street. What will be required, and we will have to work this out as we go forward, if we go forward in May, is that there will be an application that will be submitted to the Select Board office. That's what we're talking about right now, though that's not final. The permit program will allow people to park on one side of the street. My guess is, because we're in calendar 23, it would be on the odd side of the street. And although we're still discussing, we do have three months, one side, three months, the other. At our last, one of our last meetings, John Hurd raised as a potential fee, $1 a day, and that is consistent with right now what we're charging people to park in the municipal lots overnight. It's effectively a dollar-a-day program. So again, just to stress some comments on, we've received a lot of feedback from people who are very concerned about us completely lifting the overnight parking ban. That's not what this pilot program would do. It's for a six-month period. We'd like to see how many people are interested. We want to hear feedback if we go forward as to how it's received in the various neighborhoods. And I think one last thing on the townwide versus just a section of town, and this came from Officer Rato. While there are a lot of parking issues in East Arlington with the number of multifamily homes, the number of complaints on overnight parking, there's actually more complaints west of Pleasant Street than there are east of Pleasant Street. And so it was his feeling, and Chief Flaherty's as well, that if we were to do this, we should do it on a townwide basis. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's it. I tried to keep this brief. I know there's a lot of people that had signed up for this. I'll turn it back to Len if there's any, if he has any comments, or Eric has any comments. Would like to hear feedback, and then we'll talk about next steps.
Thanks, Steve. So yeah, we're just gonna open up for comments. You can say anything. It'd be helpful to get some indications from folks, me particularly, about the price point of the permit, but also ideas that you would have made for maybe, if you perceive problems with it, if you anticipate problems with it, then what can the pilot do to alleviate those problems? And also, I want to think a little bit further ahead about things that we can do in order to just minimize people's desire to have cars, even with a pilot such as this in place, but that's just thinking ahead a bit. So we have a couple hours. What I want to do is I want to get a sense of how many people want to talk right away, so that can give me an idea how to divide the time, because if we have like 60 people that want to talk, then I'm gonna need to divide the time up. But if I only see like 10 or so hands raised, then I can let people speak for up to three minutes easily. And if you have a question, what I'm thinking we'll do is you can ask a question. Someone can respond for a couple of minutes, and then you can have response, that response for a minute. Okay, so right now, I'm seeing about 12 hands raised, so it goes in on 15. So let's go with three minutes, okay? And so when you get to like 2 minutes and 30 seconds, I'll let you know you have 30 seconds, and then we'll wrap it up. And they can always get back in the line, you know, and get to hear from you again. So I'm gonna call the hands in the order that I see them on the participants list. That's Patricia Brown, and I'm gonna try and take some notes. I don't know if I can do that and keep an eye on the timer, but if I'm not looking at you, that's why I'm not looking at you. So Patricia. Oh, I need to unmute Patricia, so. Yes, to unmute. No, sorry about that.
Okay, can you guys, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna be really quick. I'm voting yes to one-side parking, because I live in East Arlington, and there are some side streets that even during the day, you either have to go really slowly or go around. There's been times when there's delivery trucks parked, Amazon trucks parked, and just like, nope, I gotta go to the next block to go to get out of that street, because the street's blocked. So I vote yes for one side. I'd vote yes to limit the overnight parking in winter, so because, again, it's crazy. And I'd vote no to permitting system, because I lived in Somerville, and the earlier reading that I attended on this parking, the experts that you had on basically like, if you don't have to have a permit system, please don't do it. So I would be, I would go with that assumption that no. But the one thing I really want to see is more enforcement. I don't feel like I should have to rat out my neighbors because they're parking on the street, but it pisses me off that they're parking on the street. So do I, do I have to take responsibility for doing that enforcement, or should it be something that is done regularly by the town so that it discourages the parking? So yes to one side, yes to limiting the winter, no to permitting, and yes to enforcement.
Well, thank you very much, Patricia. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, so, all right, I think we have Kelly Doherty next.
Yes, hi. I live on Chandler Street, so I'm literally a block off Mass Ave. Can you hear me? I should check before I start.
No, 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 appreciate that. Good thing. Nice and clearly. Yeah.
So I'm on Chandler, and I'm East Arlington, for those who aren't familiar with the area, block off Mass Ave. So we do have some parking issues, even in the daytime, but we live with that. You know, it comes with the territory of being convenient, right? But I am yes to parking overnight. I'm very supportive of the concept. I think, as with Patricia, it comes down to how it's implemented. And I think the pilot is a great idea. One suggestion that I would like to see implemented, because I do think parking is a commodity, and the town should gain some revenues from that, so as to better enforce and better implement. But one big suggestion I do have is that it be street-specific, so that if the parking, you know, the residents on Chandler Street would be getting a permit for parking overnight on Chandler Street, and the residents of Mass Ave would be getting permit parking for perhaps the metered spots as an overnight possibility. The reason I think that's important is because there's a whole lot of proposed high-rise developments along Mass Ave, and my big concern is that we will have overnight parking just completely swamping the street at all times, and I'll never be able to get a box truck or a delivery or anything of that sort ever again, or an early-morning plumber, for that matter. So that is the key concern. And I was a renter for almost 20 years here in the same neighborhood, so I understand the challenges. I'm very supportive of the idea. I do like the one-side parking. We've had to drop deliveries over at Egerton Road, and I know why, because the delivery trucks can't navigate it, so they drop things off here, expecting that we'll be kind enough to give it to the neighbors. So, you know, those types of issues definitely exist here. So I'll share those thoughts, and I'll leave it on for someone else. Thank you for letting me. Oh, one other quick question at the end, or even now.
Yeah, please.
If we have further comments, how do we send those to the Select Board?
You know, I'm gonna try and drop in the chat, the same Google form that we used to accept comments earlier on. That one has two questions, one regarding overnight parking, and then regarding permit parking. You don't need to respond to the one on permit parking, and so I'll drop that in, and we're going to try and get a page set up, or at least a link from the Select Board page to receive comments, because not only do we want to receive comments, I mean, for tonight, before we make a decision, but should we make the decision to go forward, then we certainly want to have a way to receive feedback input. Okay, so, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have John Weiss.
Hello, also an East Arlington resident. I would encourage us to think about tying into what Kelly just said. With new construction, what are the requirements of that new construction in terms of making, of parking spaces per unit in the new construction? That may not be as relevant for a sort of test run over the summer, but as we think about it long term, and there may be larger construction projects, we're sort of coming from a world where there's been an implicit requirement that there be one to two parking spaces per unit, just because we have the overnight parking ban. The other comment I had was actually a question, and that is, you were talking about having a permit and a small fee for parking, and I was curious if you were thinking about this as a, you know, $1 a day, and the day I need to go park a car on the street, I go to some web forum and do whatever I need to do and do that, or is this something that someone would need to say, buy in advance for the full six months, and it would entitle them to park on the street whenever they needed to over those six months? I suspect those are different use cases in that we have some of each. And those are my two comments.
I'll say tentatively, we're thinking the latter, where you pay in advance, much like people do for the municipal lot, and so they usually pay for that, I think, once a year. But we'd also be inclined to probably charge on a quarterly basis. It'd really be a matter of what level of, how we could break it down administratively, and so how efficient we could break it down administratively, or how much we could afford to.
I'm about to speak.
Okay, and your microphone was on in anticipation, Jean. That's our fault. Me, we're just trying to make this a little more smoothly.
Sorry, I had an incursion into my private space.
No problem, no problem. That's on me. That's on me. So I'm gonna mute you now for a little bit. You know, so John, Jonathan, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. I was just gonna just reiterate that I think that both use cases may be interesting to people.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, that's an interesting approach to it, so something to consider. And I like hearing ideas like that or thoughts about that. That's part of the reason for having this to me. So thank you. Okay, Jean.
I apologize. I had not realized that I had been unmuted.
No, that's my fault. That's totally my fault. So sorry about that. So.
Okay, so I just want to start my three minutes and get going. So I am a transportation planner who has worked on parking issues in the city of Cambridge, where they have a vehicle trip reduction ordinance, which aims to set programs in place to reduce vehicle emissions and congestion. And one of those things we did was by constraining parking. I also had the opportunity to be someone who implemented a resident parking program when I worked for the city of Chelsea. I served this Board of Selectmen on the Transportation Advisory Committee for seven years. I wanted to let you know that there was a meeting in September, sorry, in August of last year, when this subject came up, and you can find the minutes on the TAC website, but in those minutes, starting on the bottom of page two, the majority of those on TAC basically expressed that this was not a good thing to move forward without further study or without hiring a consultant to review. There is a myriad of things that will happen when this happens. Parking right now is constrained, and people make transportation decisions and decisions about car ownership based on whether they have parking. Once we take away that constraint, we will see a considerable increase in car ownership, which will then translate into further congestion. I don't understand why Arlington, which is considered to be a liberal and progressive community, would consider undertaking something like this, which flies in the face of current recommendations being made by things like the Boston MPO and Central Transportation Planning Staff. They have recently produced a lot of reports relating to the best ways to deal with climate crisis, and a lot of them relate to considerations regarding parking. I want to make sure that people are aware there was a Sustainable Transportation Planning Committee in Arlington that developed the Connect Arlington Plan. Under those goals, they seek to reduce climate impacts with travel in Arlington through infrastructure and policies that would limit parking and reduce vehicle trips. So there's that element, but then the other large element about this is, once we take away the parking constraints in the evening, now if someone has a property where they seek to make more money, there's no barrier to them creating an attic apartment or a basement apartment. And our Inspection Services Department is already quite burdened with a lot of the other projects in town. So I don't know how they would stay on top of monitoring this. There's a lot of things that can come out of Pandora's Box during a pilot, so it's gonna be challenging if people move here over the summer with the expectation that they have off-street parking, only to have it taken away. I want to know how this pilot is going to measure the metrics of success or failure, and what the process is for ending it. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate it. Yeah, so, and I'll go to Arakun.
Hi, my name is Bob. I'm really concerned that there's so much that you haven't told us that would be absolutely necessary for us to really comment on such a proposal. You haven't told us about the goals, about how you're going to evaluate it, about who's eligible, who'll be eligible, and how you'll decide that, and whether, as someone just said, is it going to be restricted to a street? Is it going to be restricted to an area, how big an area? Or is it going to be free slather, and people in, for example, Arlington Heights can feel free to park overnight in front of my house in East Arlington? These are all questions that, and how are you gonna enforce any of this? These are all questions that really we need to know the answers to before we can reasonably comment, and this was all said at the June meeting, and nothing has happened on any of those. So I'm frankly a little disappointed that this isn't explained in enough detail to be a reasonable proposal. So it's frankly upsetting. That's all I have to say.
All right, I hear you. Thank you. We'll try to answer certain questions in the context of a full Select Board meeting, unless we've like really decided on something as a group, I'm hard-pressed to say, be much more. I will say, probably if it hasn't been called out, I mean, it's something that we are going to do, then it's something that isn't likely to happen, at least at this point. So, for example, it's probably not likely that we will make it be street-specific. I'm not saying that's the case. I mean, that's certainly something that can come up in a next full Select Board meeting, but I just want to give you a sense of what you can make out of information that's been presented by Steve, okay? But I appreciate your, I understand how you feel, and we can to answer more of those questions before we make a final decision. Elizabeth, I need to unmute you.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yeah, yeah, you are.
Thank you. Like Jean, and also like Len, I've served on the Arlington Transportation Advisory. uh, Arlington Transportation Advisory Committee. And I'm distressed by a lot of the process that's going on here. I noticed that the meeting back in June sort of, you know, seemed to come out of nowhere. Um, you know, I, 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 I'm glad to see Steve presenting the um, the warrant articles that were um, they were actually listed in, in the warrant under the, the no action. But that isn't a part of the warrant that most people would read. So, you know, it's, it's to the general public, the, the meeting in June came out of nowhere and it was presented as how the select board should put this pilot in place and not if. So, you know, from the beginning, I've been concerned that there's nothing anyone can say that is going to make this not happen. Um, and given that this has come before town meeting many times and it has always failed. And it has also come evidently, you know, through some backdoor to the TAC and the TAC doesn't support it. And the TAC is the, that's the group that is supposed to be advising the select board on transportation issues. And the fact that it didn't come to them before this um, meeting in June to, to talk about how, how it might work is a little distressing to me. And then, you know, to have it show up later, as, as was mentioned, and not be supported also gives me pause. So, um, you know, I, I like the way we do things in Arlington. I like the way we talk about them. But I sort of feel like, um, even though I understand the pressures, I mean, I, I understand that a lot of people, especially in East Arlington, are dealing with um, immense parking pressures. And even where I live, which is near the middle school, the artist, Austin Middle School, you know, I see people being um, uh, people putting driveways essentially in their front yards um, to get in more cars. And I see more cars all the time as opposed to fewer in the same neighborhood. And I think, you know, what is this gonna do? It, you know, are, are we going to just eliminate all of the discipline that we have in car ownership and um, you know, just have our quality of life?
We're, we're three minutes.
Gone down. So, you know, I, I said, I have, I have many concerns. Um, you know, I, I'm generally supportive of the select board, but I guess that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And so, thank you. And, um, so let me unmute Stroker. There you go.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for the opportunity to comment here. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Leonard and Steve for uh, trying to get their worms around this, this beast. Um, I've lived in Arlington thirty years. I've talked to a lot of neighbors. I know this is a recurring, uh, it's a perennial uh, concern of many of us uh, who would like to park on the street. Um, I think there are many, many reasons in favor of that. I, I'm surprised that I have not heard any comment about the environmental impacts of paving front lawns. Um, as a canoeist, uh, you just have to look at the Mystic River, the Ailwic Brook Park, Ailwic Brook during a rainstorm to see the, the problems uh, caused by this. Um, paving front lawns is ugly. It's expensive for homeowners. It's unnecessary. And it's an environmental disaster. Um, this town has a flooding problem. I don't know anyone that's gonna argue against that. So if you wanna talk environmental merits, uh, parking on the street would solve a lot of that, a lot of that, the, the flooding problem, the, the paving of front lawns. Um, I guess lastly, and I have a whole bunch of other reasons why parking on the street overnight is a good idea, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, uh, ma- many other reasons, uh, uh, for brevity. I just wanna move on. Uh, I'm just curious about the permit system. What is the um, what's the rationale behind it? Why, why issue permits at all? Uh, is it, is the town concerned about uh, the revenue? Um, is it to keep a, a tr- a track of make sure that just town residents are using the uh, the street overnight? Would, if someone can answer that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yeah, that's the main reason, you know, to limit the, the uses to town residents, meaning also the, the prices to provide, meaning let's say a disincentive, meaning to, to overusing it, you know, and, and as we have with the current permit system for the um, the, the lots, at least using them as a lot, meaning if, if there is economic hardship, proven economic hardship, then we do waive the um, the permit. And I'll say to, to uh, someone that responded earlier, and, and I'm not taking this time from you if you wanna speak some more. It, uh, uh, that if I'm, oh, I lost the thought. You know, so, oh, we can't, we can't charge, you know, more than the cost for running the program. Meaning, uh, so, so we can't, me, as much as I would like to use the funds, me, to um, buy a um, smart electric vehicles, me, that we could share, you know, thereby, you know, reduce everyone's need to own a car. It, uh, uh, we can't do that, you know, and so, so then, we, we, if we, we, you're thinking that if we price it at a level that will discourage people from abusing it, it can also cover for the people who needs a, a break. Meaning because they just can't afford it. So, does that answer your question? Okay, great. Did you have more you wanted to say? Okay, well, we'll hang around in case you have more you wanna say later. You know, so, next Stacy Smith.
Hi there. Thank you. Uh, I, I strongly support allowing uh, one side overnight parking. Um, I live in a non-conforming two-family condo that has no parking at all for my family or my neighbor's family. Um, we have one car for a family of four. Our neighbors have two cars for a family of three. Um, we all were quite lucky, at least, that there is a spot, there are spots that we're able to purchase at a fairly high cost um, at a multifamily house on the corner. Um, however, if they decided to stop renting uh, to us, we would have no place to put our one car. Um, I guess we'd have to try and pave our front yard and I'd have to take out my garden, uh, which would be quite sad. Um, and um, so, uh, you know, I, I think especially for people who do not have parking, um, I, I think it is really uh, helpful to allow it. Um, my question though is um, that I'm not in, I, I, I'm just a little unsure about the goal of the pilot and how, how you'll assess it. When, even though we um, would really love a program like this and would absolutely wanna do it if it were permanent, we would not be in a position to give up our paid spot in order to take part in a pilot, um, because we might not get our spot back. And so, um, I'm just, you know, I, I would imagine that most people who would take part are putting their cars somewhere now. They're not gonna buy a new car just for the pa- I, I'm just curious like what, how you will, uh, wha- what you sort of expect to see, which, what kind of people will take um, part in the pilot if they already have parking or if they're, are they gonna give up parking that they, they have? I'm, I, I, I'm just not quite sure. May- and maybe, I don't know if you have an answer to that of like what, what, how you hope the pilot will provide that information to you.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from on that. Me, so, and that is, me, the problem uh, with a pilot is, is especially when you, we have it in a kind of limited timeframe, meaning and, and people aren't sure if it's going to go on. I mean, and so, so there will be, be, yeah, you, you're not gonna get the full poll of people that uh, would utilize it. So, 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 yeah, there's that, you know, and in terms of what I'm looking for, and that's speaking for my colleagues at this point, uh, that's my colleagues ever, really. It, uh, it's just whether, uh, Arlington Police tells us, me, um, it, it's not working. Me, uh, either be uh, enforcement's an issue, being, or they give us reasons for why they feel that this just, meaning, isn't something that should continue. The same with um, Arlington Fire. Uh, and, and of course, we'll be looking to DPW to see um, what their feedback is, especially when uh, it comes to street cleaning. It, uh, we will, if we decide that we want to push forward, uh, be it we take a break from the pilot and then do it again. Uh, next year, we will have to see how this works in the wintertime. So at some point, we will have to have a pilot, meaning that goes through the winter. Or let's say there's little uptake in this, meaning, um, we're not hearing any complaints, meaning, uh, or what, what, from, or let's say APD and AFD aren't giving us a, a no. Um, we, we could consider, me, um, pushing forward, you know, uh, me, at least I would, I would be open to it, assuming that I'm in a position to make a decision, me, come that time. You know, so, so, um, so that's my answer. Me, I don't know how satisfactory it is, be it if you want to pursue, wanna follow up on it. I'm listening to our follow-up question or anything else.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's super helpful. And I think what I'm taking from that is that, um, yeah, health and you're really looking to in, make sure that this maintains health and safety and well-being. Um, it's not necessarily for a car count. Because as we've heard, that it might not give us an accurate actual count of who would take advantage of it if it were a permanent project.
Right.
So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. So, uh, next we have Ann. I'm asking to unmute you. But I think it's not because my keypad isn't, when I click, it's not working. So, we'll get you there, Ann.
I'm try, uh, trying it, Len.
Oh, maybe, maybe it's the both of us doing it. That's kinda like.
Give it a try.
No problem. Thanks.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what's going on. Um, I'm having the same problem. It's not, it's not longer letting me do it.
And are you clicking anything?
I, I just unmuted myself. Did I?
Okay, good. Yeah, there you go. Alright, great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Ann Loyer. Um, I live in the Heights and on a side street. And we have people parking overnight all the time, at least four to five cars almost every night. And every once in a while, I, I report, you know, and the police come and they take it and then people keep parking. So my question is really about enforcement and how will, how will anybody know that someone has signed up for this permit program? Will they have a, a sticker on their car or, um, you know, something, some way to indicate that they actually paid to be able to park on the street? Or how, how would anybody know? Um, and because people park, as I say, now, I'm sure all over town, um, overnight. And they're not, there's just no enforcement. I mean, the, the police, there's no way the police can keep up with it or anybody else um, to, to um, enforce this. So, that's my major problem is, is trying to figure out how, what the logistics are of how, how this would be enforced and organized. And, and especially if it's on a short-term basis, people are gonna be confused if it's only from, you know, May till November, then they'll be confused after December. I, I, I don't know. There's just seems like a lot of logistical questions that need to be clarified or, or worked out, you know, before this could be implemented.
Right.
Th- thanks for looking into it. I, I know it's a big problem that's been going on for years and um, I, I don't know that, I just don't think there's any simple solution.
Yeah.
But good luck.
Yeah, no problem. It's, it's a big challenge, you know, and, you know, it isn't simple. And, and partly, you, you figure out, me, the logistics, me, once you decide to, to go forward. Me, there are certain things where it's like, oh, well, you really have to like, be, figure that out before, before you can even consider it. Me, but I think, me, uh, whether it's a placard or a sticker, you know, we can figure that out. Uh, we'll probably wanna do, me, something that's easily visible, but also relatively inexpensive and certainly something that's easily uh, removed. Um, respect to enforcement and, uh, well, since Chief Flaherty did sign on, I mean, I'm sure she was expecting something along these lines. So I'm gonna ask Chief Flaherty if she wants to chime in on the current enforcement, uh, and what, um, we could expect if we did the pilot.
Right. So as far as current enforcement, um, typically on a midnight to eight shift, the um, the parking regulations um, are in effect for one AM to seven AM. Typically on a midnight to eight shift, we have four to five police officers working. So it's impossible to cover the entire town. So they'll usually pick certain streets to conduct enforcement on, starting with the complaint streets first. Um, and as far as enforcement during the pilot program, I think that's um, one of the reasons we're here tonight is to determine how that will um, take place, whether it will be a sticker system or a list system. Um, but I'm happy to be here to support um, exploring options for the overnight parking.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, so Pam, Lopolis, did I get that correct? Hold on, I need to unmute you so you, so you can answer that. Oh, I'm gonna probably go back to pre-unmuting. There we go.
I think, I think I'm all set now.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and you did pronounce that correctly, Len. Just thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, and I've lived in town longer than the previous gentleman, 'cause it's been almost fifty years of worse than I've lived in this town. Uh, and our family owns a multifamily housing. So, two complaints we often hear from our tenants is what is about guest parking? If they have a visitor, a significant other coming for the weekend, a parent, an aunt, an uncle, um, they need to log on, I believe the procedure currently is they log on to the town and the police department and they enter their, the license plate number of the person who will be visiting that night. And they can only do that so many times during the year. So the question I have is the res- the proposal to allow resident parking overnight. And, and I'm on board with that as a test run. I, I'm not opposed to that. How, how does that connect with, does it override the visitor permit? That allowing the visitor to park over the weekend or would that procedure remain the same for that visitor pa- parking procedure?
Uh, the visitor program would stay in place. There's no plan to, to change that, yeah.
Okay. And my second suggestion would be to consider at some point, and this is not overnight parking, uh, permit for moving vans, 'cause a complaint also is that tenants don't always have room in front of the property in order to pull up a U-Haul or a moving van when they move because of people working in the area or people living in the area parking on the street. 'Cause Cambridge and Somerville, you can get a moving van permit. You, you, you apply for it and you pay a certain amount of money. So, just a thought to share with you as a potential other source of income for the town also.
That's great. Well, you know, the thing about this forum is that we're not calling scope because it's not town meeting. So we'll take ideas like that. That's a, that's a good idea. Me, so, so thank you, you know, certainly take that into consideration. You know, so great. Anything else?
No, that's it for tonight.
Okay, great. You know, so, uh, next we have Carl Wagner.
Thanks, thanks. I'm Carl Wagner. Um, I, uh, I'm concerned about this proposal. You've heard a transportation planner on the call, one of the sixty-six people that showed up, including yourselves, say this isn't being done correctly. I don't think you have a transportation planner on staff in Arlington currently to review this. And the Transportation Advisory Committee has not ruled on this. And a former member has, has on this call said that she's concerned about it. Furthermore, less than ten years ago, uh, the people of Arlington in a public vote said sixty-three percent that they wanted to keep the overnight ban and a majority of people in East Arlington even voted on that. What, what concerns me is that the select board and the elected and unelected officials in Arlington should really be working for the best quality of life and the, the lowest cost of life. And basically, the, the simplest life for the residents and the business people who are here. And this is gonna make things more complicated for a lot of people. I'd first of all like to go on the record and say that for people who are in apartments or don't have enough parking currently, of course, it's great that Arlington is providing guest par- permits and permits for people who don't have adequate parking. My mother's house, where I grew up, did not have adequate parking. So that's a great workaround to keeping our streets quiet and our, our trees that are there and, and keeping uh, the open space as we currently have it under the ban. What I really think would happen if the ban is lifted, if the pilot goes into effect, is we'll see our town be more like Medford, which has, has done the way with it. And in Medford, you have fewer street trees. In Medford, you have cars all the way up and down the blocks. So it's very hard to park near your home. You don't get rid of cars. You, you incentivize cars. And in case you're trying to incentivize EVs and plug-in cars, you basically lose the ability to plug your car into your home because you can't even park in front of your home. So, I, again, I'd like to say this, if you do it, will encourage density, nothing more than expensive density. It will not make us better off from a climate point of view and it won't make it easier for people to live here. I do encourage you though, to make sure that people who need co- um, I do encourage you though, to make sure that people who need co, um. Existing housing to have parking on the street, that you do allow that as you're doing. And I'm also cautious about such a high price that I think you're charging. I don't know if three sixty-five is too high or too low, but I would consult with what other towns charge, and, and I suspect that they're charging more like eighty or a hundred. Uh, but the main point I, I would make here is this would open up expensive density. It'll make our quality of life and our cost of life worse, as well as make it hard to be in front of our houses or even near them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Yeah, so next we have, um, Darcy, Daphne?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Did that hap, yeah, that happened. Um, sorry, I've been trying to take notes and I got stuck. I've got a bunch of things to say, but I think a lot of it has already been said by other people, so I'm just gonna say I totally agree about. Um, that there are just, I mean, I can think of pages of options and. Um, how things are gonna work and how complicated it is and what's gonna affect what? And what's gonna happen if there are, you know, two-hour parking spots, what's gonna happen with the handicap spots, what's gonna happen with people who move in and. Assume that they can park for the rest, because that's been one of the, the big reasons why people have in the past asked the select board. For a special overnight waiver for parking, is that landlords and realtors have lied to them. About the ability to park in Arlington on the street. Now, Steve has put up a town meeting article is, this year, finally to fix this. And that may help because you don't, all of the people who are living like this now. Knew this when they signed up for it. So unless they got lied to, in which case that's dreadful, but that isn't the way to solve this. Steve's. Warrant article is the way to sign, so, so, solve it. Um, my big question is. You know, the select board does this thing already with waivers, right? And they do, you said there were fifty-eight, of which they granted twenty-eight and declared twenty-seven, no, they were, the reasons weren't good enough. So, what reasons are going to be good enough? Because I can tell you in this neighborhood, I can tell you the people who were very big on the warrant article here in East Arlington. It's all about tandem parking. And with the amount of tandem parking we have in Arlington, especially in this area. You, you can't, there isn't enough room on the streets for all of those cars to be allowed to park on the street. And I think that's. That's gonna lead to a lot of arguments and a lot of parking in front of other people's houses. And parking all day and all night, because the big thing everybody keeps gliding over. Is that if you let someone park overnight. When will they ever be parking in their driveway again? There is no reason for them to. So you have, in fact, just whipped right through the ban and said it doesn't matter. And you've made daytime parking more, more difficult, it seems to me. So, uh, unless you're going to say tandem parking isn't a good enough reason, or you're going to say, that's why I was asking, you know, why are the criteria? What's, what makes people eligible to be on this program? Would you have said yes to all those twenty-seven people? Because you said no to them for reasons like they knew that when they moved in, or just because you bought another car, doesn't mean. You should suddenly get an extra space. You know, you have to kind of work with your house. If it's a two-bedroom house, it's a two-bedroom house. So, I, I'm just, I'm just really concerned that I haven't seen like a lot of details here. I thought I was gonna come and see a presentation and be able to say, oh, okay, that's how that's gonna work. Have you thought about the two-hour parking? But in fact, all I'm seeing really is people saying they're gonna go ahead with this. Despite all the people who talked about it last time, despite all the people are gonna talk about it this time. I really feel as an Arlington resident. You're not, this is feedback, but how is it feedback?
I'm sorry, Darcy, I was paying attention and stopped looking at my clock. We're at three thirty. Yeah, so, so thanks, but hang around and, and, and we can come back into the, the queue, I mean, and I hear you. I, I definitely hear you and, and partly, I mean, uh, we are a group of five, I mean, and we have to work. Things through, I mean, w- we're trying to get to a point, I mean, where, I mean, we can make a decision about going forward. And at that point, we work out a lot of, of these details. I know that's unsatisfactory, but, but. That's just how it is. We have to do things through open meeting law. We, we just can't deliberate a lot outside of the public eye, which is good. I mean, but it does slow things down and creates these kinda situations, I mean, but we have to answer them because we, that's only we can, we can actually do some kinda. Implementation even, even of a pilot, and so, but stay around and we can come back, talk to you more. Uh, so, uh, let's see.
You're such a bullshit artist.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you what I really feel and what I'm really thinking. It's not, I'm not trying to make stuff up for you. Is this Joe Blanchard?
Yep, precinct four, currently Milton Street, longtime resident of Melrose beforehand. Um, and I hear, um, every of the other speakers from East Arlington have, have said everything new that needs to be said, I think. Um, I have, um, just really three things to say. One is, the enforcement issue is, will be a big deal. Um, even on a one side of the street pilot, because a badly parked SUV or a badly parked full-size pickup. Takes up almost literally half of some of these, um, East Arlington streets. Which brings my second real concern, which is I'm glad the police have already been involved in this pilot program. But the fire department and emergency vehicle drivers. Um, who aren't used to having cars parked on the street. I think everybody in East Arlington has had that experience of going out on their front porch. And seeing a fire truck or an ambulance trying to make their way down some of these streets. Um, or you smell smoke at night, you're out, you know, it's a. When that house went up on Edgerton, all of us just kind of marveled at how, how anyone, how the emergency vehicles got down that street. Um, so that's it. And the third thing is that. That during the pilot program, if you go forward with it, that you really collect data of the incidents of the issues. That, that, that arise, so that, so that we really know. How many, have emergency vehicles been blocked? How many people have had, have, have called? Um, um, have called the police or, or city, some of their city person. Um, to come and do something about their, about, um, a neighbor who's parking. And I guess at this point, having listened to people, I guess I would advocate for a street-specific permit. Um, and, um, I, and I think that's about it, um. So, and I, and I would like to, I, as I say, it's the emergency, I'd really be curious to know about the fire department and emergency. Vehicle drivers' reactions to this overnight.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, well, that's, I mean, they, they, they are involved, I mean, uh, and, and we, they will be our primary. Or one of the big sources of, of feedback, I mean, that we will. Look for in terms of determining the, um, how the pilot work, you know, so, um, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see, I think I need to unmute Kristen. Hold on, Kristen. Are you sat there, Kristen?
Awesome. Good evening, uh, Christian Klein. I live on Newport Street, which is, um, in the Heights, but it's sort of East Arlington-like. In that it's a block of two-family houses, uh, forty, uh, forty-five hundred, uh, square foot lots. And essentially, you know, we have twenty-two houses on our block, which is forty-four units. We might be able to put eleven cars in, um, going down one side of the street, so it's basically, you know, one in four. Would be able to take advantage of this program if it was to go into effect. Um. I have concerns about the overnight guest parking and how they'll be impacted. Will, you know, will overnight guests be limited to the same side of the street? Will they be able to park on both sides of the street? Cause current, currently the bylaw only allows you to park your car on the side of the street where you are. In fr, directly in front of your house. Um, having parking on one side of the street does also encourage people to drive the wrong way on. Uh, the wrong side of the street in order to get to a parking space, because they're not gonna go all the way around the block to make sure they're parked in the right direction. Um, I'm concerned about people parking for, for days on end. I had a, uh, a neighbor of mine who unfortunately their car broke down. Was parked directly across from my driveway at the time, uh, was there for two weeks, was ticketed once. Um, and, you know, that, you know, makes it significantly more difficult to be able to move out of your driveway. Especially if it's, you know, one side only and it's for, you know, for six months, that's a, a huge imposition on people on one side of the street. Um, enforcement, I agree with everyone else, enforcement's a huge issue. Um, I agree that if this was to happen, it should, you should only be able to park on your own block. Um, I agree with the, the comment about that this really is only for gas-fuel vehicles. It does not include electric vehicles because there's nowhere to plug in a car. Um, this cannot happen in winter, uh, if there's snow on the street, this curb, we do not clear curb to curb. We clear about a foot and a half in from the curb, uh, so somebody parks a car across from my driveway, I cannot get my car out. It just doesn't happen. Um, and then I think a lot of this is just because a lot of the two-family houses are now two-family condos. And there's a lot, you know, there's no longer that hierarchy of who lives in the house, and therefore. There's just a lot of people who don't get along with their condo neighbors, and they don't wanna deal with having to do tandem parking. And I think that, you know, it's, it's an unfortunate thing. It's similar to having all the private ways in town where, you know, whoever did the development. Did what was easy and then moved along, so, um, you know, I, I agree parking is a huge issue in town. Unfortunately, I don't think this is really getting at the solution for it.
Alright, Christian, thank you. Yeah, so next we have Peter Fiore. Let me unmute you.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Diggins. Peter Fiore, I live down on Mott Street, uh, in, uh, East Arlington. Uh, I like a lot of people I, who have concerns and complaints, I, I agree, I agree with them. I don't, uh. I'm really not comfortable with this. The devil's in the details and, and there are still too many unanswered questions. Uh, I do know that, you know, as I looked through a recent, uh, uh, town, town, uh, report, you know, there's. Maybe approximately what, thirty-five thousand cars registered in Arlington? And, and yet you only had fifty-five requests for, uh. First, you know, for parking, uh, overnight, and so I just, I don't see a, a huge demand here, although I realize for. People in precinct four, there is tremendous hardship. Uh, uh, if these permits, if you do this, would permits be only for, you know, a person would have to be a resident? And the vehicle registered in Arlington, is that the idea?
Yes.
And, uh. Okay, so here's what I'll, I'll, how I'll leave this, um. I think this is going in the wrong direction. I think we should do things like offer property tax rebates for properties that are vehicle-free. Where they don't own a car or register a car or park a car or use a car, that maybe that's the direction we ought to go in to, to try to alleviate the parking problem. Uh, I've lived in town long enough and been in town meeting long enough in, in a town that's always strapped for tax revenue. That the cynic in me thinks that the idea is to put more cars in town and on the street, because it means the town gets more property. Uh, more tax revenue from motor vehicle excise taxes and. Uh, forgive me for, for being cynical like that, but, um, I, that's the way I feel. And finally, if you do go forward with this, I, I would ask that the members of the select board. That regardless if it's odd or even side to the street, your side of the street, be the side of the street that has the twenty-four, seven. Uh, parking, okay, and so that, that you're fully, fully into the program. Uh, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Kristen Anderson.
Hello.
Hi.
Oh, thank you. Um, uh, thanks, uh, to the select board for all of your hard work and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, one concern about lifting the parking ban, um, is of pedestrian and cyclist, uh, safety. Lifting the parking ban will lead to an increase in the number of cars in town. Cars are hazardous to both pedestrians and cyclists. Um, on most days, I walk or ride my bike, um, around four to six miles through town from my home in Morningside. To work in the Heights, and as a pedestrian, I beg you not to allow overnight parking. On town-owned roads without sidewalks on either side of the street. There are many miles of roads in town that have no sidewalks. When cars are parked on roads with no sidewalks. Pedestrians are forced to walk in the middle of the road. This can be unbelievably dangerous. As an example, Ridge Street is a corridor that gets fast traffic and in places has no sidewalk on either side of the street. It's already very dangerous to walk up and down. Please do not add more parked cars to roads like Ridge that have no sidewalks. The town should be encouraging folks to walk, bike and take public transportation more and drive cars less. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to say that, uh, many of our roads are public space that would be better used to cite. Green infrastructure that reduces flooding and improves water quality in our rivers and ponds. Um, unfortunately, Arlington has both flooding problems and our water bodies are badly polluted. Um, and I just, before I, um, and I just wanna repeat, um, please do not. Lift the overnight parking ban on roads that have no sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
So, next we have John Rogers and Eton.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I am against this proposal. Um, but my questions are. Uh, since, especially since I live on the odd side of the street, would you consider having odd side parking on odd years? And even side parking on even years, uh, to, to even it out for everybody. Um, as far as the fee is concerned, you came up with a dollar a day, three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year. And you said that the town cannot collect more money than the plan costs. So, is this, are you assuming a thousand people's gonna sign in for a thou, for three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year? Um, that would be three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Is that the cost of the, the plan? Do you know what the plan's gonna cost before you come up with a, with a, with a figure? Um, my other topic is on enforcement. Um, and what I'm about to say, I'll probably get a moving violation when I pull up my driveway in the morning. Um, we can't, we, we cannot police the parking laws that we have now. I. Challenge anybody to walk Highland Ave, Gray Street, without making at least a dozen trips into the street. To walk around cars that are parked across the driveway. Another concern, um, uh, gentleman made was cars parked across his driveway, especially in the snow. He can't get in and out. Uh, I may be wrong, but I believe that there's a, um. Either a bylaw or a parking regulation that you cannot park across the street from somebody's driveway. Causing them an impairment to get in and out. Another, um, another comment was people paving their front lawns to park their cars. I, once again, I believe that there's a, a bylaw that says you can't park in front of your, your home. I don't know how the, I don't know how town gets away with the side-by-side townhouses, but I do believe that there's a bylaw that says you can't park. In front of your, uh, in front of your house. So I don't see how we can possibly enforce, enforce it. But, um, that's all that I have, uh, for my comments and, uh, I really hope you go with the even odd year. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, that would be the plan, I mean, to do odd sites on odd years, I mean, and we are working with Town Council. Uh, respect to the cost of the permit, I mean, we have to just reasonably, you know, justify the cost of the permit. And so, uh, that's, I mean, a dollar a day is in our first, you know, preference. He, but he will give us guidance as to what that number can be, and so, thank you for your comments, uh, questions. And so, next we have Elaine Maynard.
Hi there, thank you.
Sure.
So I'm at thirteen Chandler Street, um, which is in East Arlington. Um, I'm pretty concerned by the, the, the conversation and, you know, kind of what I'm hearing, I think for a number of reasons. Um, I'll put it just, um, out there, just as a, you know, kind of my own frame of mind is. There's a, there is a project at, um, one ninety, two hundred Mass Ave, um. In, uh, in discussion that abuts my property, um, and will be a major, um, major change to my quality of life. So I, I just wanna put that out there as my own, you know, sort of prejudice and concern to start with. Um, I also live on an odd side of the street currently, um, so, um. I will now have parking in front of my house, um, as part of this, which is also another, um, you know, kind of blow to my quality of life. Um, but I'm also. Um, but I'm also concerned about like the tone of this meeting feels like we're gonna do this, not we're discussing about doing it. Um, and I don't know if that's just my interpretation of it. I guess I was expecting tonight like a real presentation about this and a real presentation about the pros and the cons. And kind of when I look at the presentation, what I see is um a table that uh gives co- communities that we compare ourselves to. And in the column of um communities whom we whom we compare ourselves to and have overnight parking bans, that list is extremely long. And then there's kind of a a middling ground and then there's a small, then there's Medford and and Somerville um who have who who have made adjustments to their parking. So I haven't really heard that like in all of this like for like and all of these people we compare ourselves to, why do we think that, you know, wh- what takes us out of the category which many of our peers have 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 issue have um not moved in this direction. I totally get the parking issue. Um, look, I every time I have an overnight guest, I also have to call. It's pain. Um, but it's also what I signed up for when I purchased purchased my condo. I just don't get how this improves anybody's quality of life, um particularly the residents on the street. Um, I agree with the gentleman who talked about, um, you know, we're just increasing density. We're just en- encouraging more cars. Um, i- it it doesn't feel to me like this is kind of the neighborhood that we live in and the neighborhood that that I signed, certainly I signed up for. Um, just in conclusion, I would say if you do do this, I think it needs to be street specific. Um, and I think my big concern with this is, again, tonight, sort of what I was expecting is a plan. And so if this pilot works and if you get good feedback on the pilot, does that mean you then do a pilot for a year and you look at this in the wintertime? Or are you saying, look, we're only ever gonna do this from May to November? And then my question is like, who has a car from May to November? Or who needs who needs that extra space from age new uh November? But December one comes and you don't need it. So I I just I honestly don't understand that they're there, this conversation. There's no like from pilot to this, to this, to this.
Three thirty fifteen.
Sure. So, you know, that's big concerns and and big concerns about, again, ma- mainly by interpretation, but the tone feels like we're doing this. Um, not we're discussing about doing this. And again, we'll all to reiterate, you know, I'm getting the whammy of a whole bunch of stuff coming at me.
We're at three thirty. Me so so yeah, no, I I hear you. I mean, so so if we I'm 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 just gonna speak primarily for myself. Uh, now, if we were talking about doing a permanent change, I mean, then I feel that we really would have to come to you with all the details. The reason we're doing a pilot, I mean, is to figure out uh all the these details, I mean, um and and so we, the only way we can move forward with doing the pilot, I mean, is to figure out the details. And uh and and we will, uh and then and that'll be, I mean, I'm just a little, I'm sorry, I'm being a little tonological here, you know? We have to figure out the tails in order to do the pilot. We don't have the details now. We're letting you know that we are seriously thinking about going forward with the pilot, I mean, and and if my colleagues or if we get enough votes on the select board to to do it, then we figure out the tails, we do it, we get data on it, I mean, we reassess. I'm not gonna make any promises about doing another forum, you know, but chances are we would, you know, uh, I mean, chances are, I mean, we would do uh another pilot in in the following year for a longer period of time, me, but but we we just yeah, I understand your frustration about the details because we just have to.
I just, I just feel like this meeting was um billed as a presentation and a discussion. And it was a modest presentation at best.
I got you. I understand. I understand.
It's it's a big issue. It's a big issue and it's a big quality of life issue for many of us if it were to go into effect even at a pilot stage. So I just don't understand. There was certainly no presentation tonight and the presentation actually leads to more questions than it does. Again, I look at a big list of communities that don't do this and we go, but we're gonna do it. Um, yeah. Again, appreciate the opportunity to to chat and for you to listen to me.
Sure, and I appreciate the comments. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. Uh, so we we have a repeat here, I mean, and I'm gonna do it now because I think we can, we have enough time uh for everybody, I mean, including Suzie um Reap. And so uh let me unmute you, Kelly.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions because you there's been a lot of sort of gray stuff and I thought it was sort of a give you feedback. And the one thing you sounded pretty sure of was that that it wouldn't be street specific. So I just want to dig into that just for a little bit of of detail because I think the reason it has to be street specific is for emergency maintenance, planned maintenance. I mean, how else can you ping everyone and notify them? The street sweepers are coming through or we have a fire on Chandler and boom. I think you want to code those permits so that you can access information for people. I mean, in today's, you know, cell phone days, everything is via an immediate ping. And so for the police department, for the emergency vehicles, for all of those reasons, that's super important in in my view. And I wouldn't support this if it were not street specific. Um, and I think that the tenants and the folks who are struggling because they have, you know, situations with the parking, uh, you know, I don't know that you'd want to circle back, but I I suspect that they would be as concerned as me when these high rise apartment buildings go in and that's the one that um, that Elaine just referenced, which is on the corner of Mass Ave and Chandler. The residents of that building alone will completely fill up Chandler Street and their guests and their their partners um overnight. And so I I'm literally right at the top of Mass Ave, so I can tell you I deal with this issue during the day, never mind at night. I'm supportive and I'm trying to be supportive. I understand the parking constraints are out there and I think it's necessary and I know my tenants would would really like an extra parking spot, so I want to be sensitive to their needs too. But if it's not enforced properly and managed properly, it'll turn into a nightmare really, really quickly. So I I think that even though it sounds burdensome to have the fees and the rest of it, support a very detailed, efficient program with some real data and and that may be something the pilot needs to look at is how that would be implemented for enforcement purposes. One little anecdote. Uh, summer day, beautiful weather, not winter, and uh this was before Chief Clarity's tenure, so I'm not accusing her. I had a parked car in front of my driveway and I couldn't back out of my driveway all day long and I had called the police. And the the response was we can ticket, but we don't tow. So when you start doing this overnight and people park at three in the morning, they think, eh, I can't, my tail end is blocking, but I'll be here by morning before these people need to go anywhere. The police department can't just ticket. We have to give them the authority to tow and that may be something that these fees need to consider as well. So that's, I wanna, I wanna be good and allow this, but i- it not in some open ended way. It's gotta be very restrictive. If your address is Chandler Street, you can apply for parking overnight on Chandler Street. If your address is Egerton Road, you can apply overnight for Egerton Road, that type of thing. And if you live on Mass Ave, apply for Mass Ave.
Alright, thanks for that feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me have that say again, too. Appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, I was saying, I think we have enough time for everybody, you know, so uh so alright, so um Greg Dennis asking to unmute. Turn it off. We could hear, we hear, getting some audio, Greg. Can you talk? You're looking unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Okay, weird. Um, yeah, I I think the reason it doesn't feel like a genuine pilot to some people is because the metrics for success are are don't seem completely well defined. Um, from the outset, that this was first proposed, the proponents were asked about what the metrics would be. That that question wasn't answered then, and I feel like it doesn't have a very clear answer now. I I hope the answer isn't whatever makes APD jobs easier because that's really the only sort of hint of a metric I've I've heard so far. You know, allowing overnight parking doesn't mean that there will just be more cars at night. There will, these will naturally become new permanent parking spaces because people will park there at night and then they'll be there during the day. And I feel that that just unfairly privileges parked cars over all the other uses uh for the street. The street in front of my house is used by kids riding their bikes, playing street hockey, basketball, runners, joggers, walkers, block parties. It just makes me sad to think about displacing and discouraging all these healthy and community building uses to make way for more parked cars. Um, there are uh these, it's been pointed out, the neighboring cities that'll do allow overnight parking. The lesson I take from these places is to not make the mistakes they did in building such a car centered culture. Anyone witnessing the fight over parking on Mass Ave in North Cambridge can see firsthand like the pain and division of trying to undo the mistakes of the past and I feel like we're trying to make them. Uh, I'm a town meeting member in East Arlington. Um, virtually everyone who's reached out to me is opposed. And maybe it's my part of East Arlington, not the other part of East Arlington. Uh, usually very strongly opposed. From what I've heard about this problem is that it's a problem confined to very particular streets. And I'd like to create a solution for those streets and not necessarily impose this on the whole town. Um, that could be streets roll, can opt in if if a majority or a large fraction of their residents want to have overnight parking, then that street has overnight parking and they're treated like a private way for the purposes of enforcement. Uh, but not to impose this on everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And so you have Chris Hallager.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Oh, great. Um, I wasn't aware of all of these issues. It's it's really huge. It's kind of um surprising to me beyond my expectation, but fortunately, now I can see, very fortunate, I own a condo in the Heights and I have a parking spot, but I'll tell you, Arlington would be really lonely if I wasn't able to have overnight parking for friends and family. And I was actually, I joined hoping that I would hear that you're not going to eliminate the um, you know, apply for overnight parking for friends and family program if you did go ahead with the pilot. And quite honestly, I I wish that Arlington allowed more than two weeks. I wish it was four weeks out of the year that someone could uh request overnight parking for friends and family. So, um, that's all I have. It's just a much bigger issue than I ever imagined.
I appreciate that, Chris, you know, so yeah, you know, it's 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 com- it's complex, you know, so so we have another repeat, Jane, let me unmute you.
Actually, I would like the people um like John Elsanyan and Susan, the people who haven't spoken yet, I have a long list of things to say.
I I appreciate that, me, you know, it's just, yeah, it's just that um some of the repeats have put their hands up before.
I put my hand up too, but they they had their hands up ahead of me. I don't know why they didn't get like called on.
Alright, yeah, and the way sequencing in my um, my um, well, whatever, I appreciate.
My life experience at town meetings just goes against the way things are done. So if we could, people haven't spoken yet, that'd be great.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. So thank you very much. Me, so um, John.
Uh, thanks then. I I being someone who has uh run Zoom meetings, I know it's it's very difficult to uh to balance the the Hollywood squares. So I appreciate it. John Islanian, uh Tough Street, East Arlington. I'm a current uh, ten uh associate member of the Transportation Advisory Committee here in Arlington, uh resident for about twelve years. Um, a lot of the things that I wanted to say have been touched upon, um, but for the record, I'd just like to state a few of the thoughts that I have. Um, I do very much agree with the idea that um it's somewhat misleading when we discuss an overnight uh parking, uh when in fact it's twenty four seven parking and it will result in um the establishment of uh, you know, dirt collecting locations of cars that just won't just won't move. Because people take advantage of alternative forms of transportation, they don't have a place to house their 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 vehicle that they want to use on occasion. And they do want to live in Arlington because of the walkability, because of the connectivity with biking um and it's et cetera. And uh and so I do think that it's not necessarily the concept is good. The idea that someone who lives in Arlington can't uh, you you know, use their car for for daily use, but in reality, it it's just gonna be housing those cars uh, you know, twenty four seven. So um, in in theorizing a a a pilot program that could be successful as a pilot, I think that there it does need to be much more granular. Um, and the the number one thing that I would recommend is that uh any streets that are either designated in school zones or adjacent to any of our schools um be uh omitted from this pilot uh because it will cause uh an undue hardship for drop off, pickup and 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 movement um pedestrians of children walking around. I just think that that we should really eliminate any streets related nearby to schools in the town from this, from any sort of even pilot program. Um, the second thing is the 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 odd and even is uh is a bit complex. I know it's easier to implement if it's just one or the other, but the reality is that because we have so many one way streets in Arlington, uh a lot of odd numbered streets is going to create a a a door zone um of of the driver getting out into the street as opposed to getting out onto the curb. And and that's going to create a significant hazard for uh for all the other users of the of the of the town and the streets, especially because we're not used to, you know, so many cars being parked. Um, so I I I want to be very cognizant of the fact that we're creating more danger for uh bicycle users uh that are using, you know, side streets to avoid using the more complex uh maneuverability on the the main roads. So school zones, door zones and um.
And we're at three, John.
Yep, I know, but we've also had some people that have had over seven minutes, so I'll I'll finish up real quick. Um, I I think that a pilot can be done in in a much more acute way, where we are looking at the particular areas of 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 where we have the problem, because what's gonna happen is that we'll do a pilot. It's gonna work great in certain areas and it's gonna be a disaster in others, but the aggregate of that information is gonna result in an overall like positive or negative that skews one or the other reality. Um, whereas if we're more acute with our with our approach uh and and then referring to a lot of the people that have discussed data, I do think that there's gotta be a way that we can incorporate.
Okay, John. So the the sevens, the sevens were when I interacted with them and it was accidental. I think we have your point, okay?
So I just want to finish my my thought by saying that I think if we can use some sort of uh mobile device data in terms of who's parking their car where in location to their to their residence, I think that would be really helpful. I'm not in favor of of street by street because I don't think it's practical, but definitely zone by zone. So.
Okay. Alright, thank you. And there'll be other times, waste of feedback. Much pleasure. Sure, no problem. Stroker, let me unmute you.
Um, I already spoke, so I'm I'm happy to, I do have further comments, but I'm happy to wait my turn if you want to hear from other people that haven't spoken yet.
Cool. Thank you, Stroker. Susan?
Hi, y'all. I'm sitting in my car here, listening to this very interesting conversation. This is wonderful citizen participation and our select board being very welcoming of the participation. I appreciate it very much. Um, I'm uh Susan Stamps, thirty nine Grafton Street, town meeting member, precinct three. I'm kind of confused about this process. Um, it seems like, um, I didn't know this, but town meeting ten years ago apparently voted down removing the overnight parking ban. Um, the, we heard from uh people on the Transportation Advisory Committee tonight who said that the TAC, who was um, as I understand it, appointed by the select board to be an advisory board to them. Um, the TAC voted against it. They said it was a bad idea, but yet despite despite these two negative votes, um, the select board is feeling like it wants to go ahead with the pilot. Um, sorry, I can't hold on a second. Turn my lights on so people can see me. Um, so and also the trend in um the changes in the zoning bylaws over the last.
Oh, you're breaking up, Susan.
Zoning. Okay, can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
Okay, so um also, um the trend in our zoning bylaws has been to reduce.
the trend in our zoning bylaws has been to reduce the number of parking places per unit for, um, will definitely, um, apartment buildings and that will be the case with the MBTA zoning, uh, laws, I assume. And, but yet, but this is going in the other direction. Um, the Transportation Advisory Person said this is going to, actually, you're going to end up with more cars um, on the street because if, let's just say somebody wants to buy into a parking to a condo with one parking space, but they know that they're going to be able to park on the street, well, now you're going to have two cars. One of them was on the street, so now suddenly you have two cars, but yet on the zoning side of our government, we're reducing the number of cars per, for dwelling unit. And I, I feel that um, I, I don't know exactly if the Select Board feels it has to go ahead with this pilot, I would ask them to, to ask the, the Transportation Advisory Committee to work with them to design the pilot, because I think they're probably the experts. And, um, that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Susan. You know, so to deal with, there was not a vote being intact, I mean, I guess that there was expressions, I mean, of, of of a negative feeling towards doing the pilot and, and the effects of it, but there wasn't a vote being, I went to TAC because I'm, I'm on it as a liaison for the Select Board, asking me if what metrics we could use in, in order to assess the pilot. And there was a sense that there weren't any metrics that we could really um, come up with that could be tested, I mean, in a short amount of time. And then there was an expression of concerns, I mean, and a negative posture to say the least towards me, um, allowing for overnight parking. So that's the situation with TAC. Um, Town Meeting, the, the vote in 2013 is what it is, was what it was. Uh, so next we have Constantine. To like Nick? Let me unmute you. There you go.
Good evening. Um. So it seems like, my, so my name is Constantine. I live, uh, on Amherst Street in, uh, in Arlington. I've been here about three years, so not nearly as long as, um, many of you. Uh, it seems that most people, when they uh, think about this pilot, they think this is a permanent, this is what's happening. And part of it might be the messaging in that I agree with the previous gentleman that said that because there's not a success criteria, it feels very much like this is what's happening and this is going to be permanent. But it is not. And, and also somebody previously said that, you know, in order to properly make this decision, whether this pot, where the parking ban should be in effect or not is we need data and the best way to do it is to run a pilot. So I'm very much in favor. Um, some of the other comments I'm hearing also sound very much like, uh, not in my backyard. And um, if you, if you remember several years back, there was a big, big thing about NIMBY in California. People were opposing housing construction. And I think most of the country did not look favorable on that, right? So, um, next point is, you know, again, people assume that as soon as this goes into effect, the streets are going to be littered with cars. I'm not sure who would be paying $365 just not to park in their driveway. You know, certainly I wouldn't do it if I didn't have to. I'm going to do it because I have my parents visiting every weekend because they help us watch our kids. So I have to leave the car for Saturday and Sunday night on the street. And I would gladly pay 365 to do that. Um, but I wouldn't park my car in the street during the weekday. As far as enforcement, I don't know how it's enforced now because there's no stickers. I imagine that, that police drive by and then they notice a car parked in the street. They have to loop around an hour after that. They probably call in and see if there's a waiver. There have been times where I put in a waiver and I still got in the ticket and then I had to file an appeal. That takes time and effort. Enforcement would be much easier if there was a sticker on the car like they have in Cambridge and Somerville. It's a simple drive-by sticker, yes, sticker, no, and, and move on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And, uh, next we have Suzie Kelp? I'm sorry, my vision is failing me here. No, it's Reeve, Reeve.
It is Reeve. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Sorry about that.
No worries. Uh, I'm Suzie Reeve. I live at 14 Grove Street here in Arlington. It is an apartment building. I feel I'm definitely in the minority there in this meeting. Uh, briefly, I wanted to mention is, uh, I think as Chris or someone mentioned earlier about expanding the number of permits allowed for, uh, guest overnight parking for the year. That would be great. I, I think I uh, live alone and I like to have friends or family come stay overnight. And you know, the two weeks for the whole year is pretty limiting. Aside from that though, about, about resident parking, uh, people have mentioned, you know, if there's stuff happening in town like people, you know, paving their front yards or parking on the street overnight, getting a ticket and still parking there. Clearly there is a need for this. And, uh, you know, a lot of people here in the meeting own homes in Arlington. You have a driveway or maybe even a garage if you're lucky and uh, if that's, I'm very jealous of you. I would love to own a home in Arlington. But you know, I, I can't afford it. I'm a renter. And when I, I live alone now, when I first moved to Arlington about three years ago, I lived in an apartment building with a roommate. We had one parking space for our two-bedroom unit, but we both needed cars to get to work. My office is in Marlboro. My roommate's office wasn't ready. You know, there was no way around it. We rented a parking space for $150 a month up the street because, you know, that was the option we made it work, but you know, if that uh, private spot renter suddenly decided that they didn't want to rent us a spot anymore than, than what we wouldn't, we wouldn't be welcome in the town of Arlington because we can't park. You know, if you, if you need a roommate, an additional income to be able to live here and you need a car to get to your job, you, you need somewhere to park it. And I, I think it's a a shame I had, you know, I had been hearing some of those kind of not in my backyard type mentalities for people that just, you know, if you, you have the privilege of living in a home and that's wonderful, but and I think we should be more welcoming to, to people that don't have that opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate that, you know. Uh, so, so I'm going to say, I'm going to call Andrew and I'm going to go through the repeats and then I'm going to check back with my colleagues, meet, uh, uh, for some comments. And then maybe we can bring the meeting, the official select board meeting part to a close. He, as I said, I can stay around probably for another hour, uh, to listen to comments, I mean, and, and answer questions, but I do want to then bring the formal select board part of it, uh, to a close, assuming my colleagues want to. And certainly, uh, what Chief Flaherty, uh, goes, she wants to also. So, um, we're going to stop, um, with Elaine Maynard and then, then, um, we'll, we'll go from there. So, um, let's see who we have. Next, Andrew Fisher? I need to unmute you. Sorry about that. Can you unmute me? Andrew? I tell you what, we're going to, we're going to work on the mute part. I'm going to let Larry go next, I mean, and then we'll work on the mute and come right back to you, okay? There you go, Larry.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Larry Slotnick, um, 15-year resident on Grafton Street and a town meeting member, uh, you know, in a, live in a two-family house here. So, um, this topic, uh, got me interested in, uh, learning more about TAC and then the Connect Arlington Plan, which is kind of very proudly, uh, on display on the TAC webpage. Uh, and it seems to me that uh, possibly an unintended consequence of, uh, lifting overnight parking ban would violate a few of the, I think, real basic precepts of the Connect Arlington Plan regarding the added density of motor vehicles, um, uh, safer, maintaining safe passage for bicyclists and other road users that aren't motor vehicle drivers. It's got me thinking that, uh, in unintended consequence could be actually more, a greater number of registered motor vehicles in the town. Now, maybe that's a good thing. Maybe that means that we're increasing the density of the town, meaning the number of people per street or per square mile, um, which I, I know is a hot topic these days. So just to the point that you made, Len, when you asked TAC if about possible metrics that could be imagined, I exchanged a couple of emails with the town's assessor yesterday because the assessor's office, uh, sends out, uh, the motor vehicle excise tax bills every year. So I emailed with Dana Manning, uh, and I, I asked her a hypothetical, um, which was if, uh, and I'm thinking about East Arlington, so maybe this has some NIMBYism to it, but I, I said, if the Select Board presented the assessor's office with a list of, say, 25 streets, uh, street names in East Arlington, could the assessor's office tell us the number of registered motor vehicles on those 25 streets, like on day one of this pilot? And then tell us the similar number on day 180 of the pilot. Um, seemed like a pretty basic thing where you do a search of a database or a spreadsheet. But she didn't have the answer actually yesterday to that question and said she'd need to get back to me. But that is my concern, that it would, it could possibly lead to, uh, just a greater number of registered motor vehicles in Arlington and, uh, probably have a couple of other unintended consequences at well, as well.
All right. Thanks, Larry. And thanks. So Andrew, I think you can speak now.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I live 25 Lombard Road, Andrew Fisher. I really appreciate the, the chance to, to speak and I really appreciate, uh, Len and and the selectmen having this, uh, this discussion. Uh, first I want to give a few facts about what came of, the result of the 2013 non-binding referendum on to repeal overnight parking. And then I have a, a little bit about, uh, Article 17, which we voted on the overnight fee. And then I'll give my opinion. Um, that, that, uh, referendum result, the total vote was, uh, 52, 54 to keep the ban and 3,000 to repeal the van. Um, not a single precinct voted in favor of the ban. 18 precincts had a vote that was 60% or more in support of maintaining the van ban. And in, in East Arlington, um, Precinct Four, the vote was 55% keep the ban. And the other precincts in East Arlington was over 60% to keep the ban. So that's that. Um. Also, uh, Precinct 13 was 73% wanted to keep the ban, which maybe is why the Western sort of, uh, precincts might be more problematic, but the logic is backwards. It's to, to make it town-wide. Um, anyway, to get going, uh, the, um, the vote for Article 17 was to maintain, was to change the fee from $200 down to $25. Um, and that passed. We don't have the count. But that's what, that was the sentiment at Town Meeting at that time. And what was worked out was the first year of the application, the application was felt to cost $75. And then after that, annual renewal would be 25. My feeling is I, I am opposed. Uh, Precinct Six, where I live, the vote was, um, 60, 40. And I, I just feel it should be respected or at least made targeted. Um, and here's my rationale. Where I live, I, I could easily advantage, be to my aid to park my truck on the street all the time. Um, but between all the parking between, uh, the girls' boys' club and where the churches are on Mass Ave is in super high demand when there are sporting events. Parents got to put their car somewhere. And the streets get clogged and it's wonderful. We don't complain. It's been years since anyone complained that a fire truck couldn't get by. If we change that in that area, or like a previous guy said, speaker said, uh, anywhere, okay, three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. But you get my drift.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, so, uh, so we're going to swing around, you know, for, uh, three repeats, meaning like I said, we'll then, uh, bring, uh, listen to my colleagues if they have something to say. Um, and then we'll bring it to official close, but we can, um, certainly take more comments. Uh, Jean?
Yes. So, um, a couple of things I want to point out, the reason why this is before the Select Board and they are, um, choosing to move forward with it as opposed to, you know, following what the town has voted on in our various townwide referendums or at the town meeting is that, um, the town of Arlington's Traffic and Parking Commission is housed within the Board of Select or the Select Board. In a lot of other towns and cities of our size, there is a separate commission and it usually consists of people who are not elected. So those decisions relating to what is the best for Traffic and Parking Commission rules, members of police, uh, planning department, I mean, I have served on the commission when I was in Chelsea. So, um, that is sort of what's going on here. We maybe should probably consider separating the rules of traffic and parking from the Select Board. That's one. Two, if you don't want to hear the advice that the committee TAC is providing and actually hasn't actually been asked their opinion or to provide a study, then you should probably hire a consultant to do this. I mean, we hire consultants in Arlington for lots of studies. Um, I know that Nelson Iguard is on retainer with the town. And there are plenty of transportation planning firms out there that do this type of work. And they can do the type of study that needs to be done before a pilot is begun. Um, it'd be really challenging to do a pilot and then remove it for people who have made that decision. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of talk about affordability in Arlington and it is unaffordable right now. Rents are very high, but right now a three-bedroom is sort of around the market of like 25 to 2,800 dollars a month. If this were to go through and suddenly our landlord could look at three individuals renting a three-bedroom as opposed to a family, they could get $1,200 a bedroom. That would bring that rent up to 3,600. That's kind of what we see in Somerville. Um, and let's see, how, there have definitely been, I want to know if there have been pilots in other communities in the Commonwealth. Um, I've talked to a lot of people in my precinct who all believe that this should be brought before a vote as it has in the past. Um, I kind of think, honestly, I'm just going to say it. I think this is an abuse of power. If the Select Board refuses to listen to the community, which is stating that they don't want, I mean, we're 66 people in a meeting. We don't represent the whole town. We don't represent the seniors that aren't able to log in on Zoom. I mean, there are a variety of people that are not being a part of this public process because both the meetings have been held on Zoom. Um, the state is rescinding the ability to hold these meetings remotely on March 23rd. We don't have a transportation planner. Why are we rushing through this? That's about, I know there's so many more things I could say because there are so many reasons not to do this and very few reasons to do it. And I'm going to give up my time to someone else.
All right, Jean, thank you. And let me, um, unmute Stroker, Stroker. Sorry about that.
Hi, back again. I'll keep it short. Um, I have to respectfully take issue with the characterization of the overnight parking ban as pro-environment. Um, I personally have a friend who had water up over his engine block on Lafayette Street. I have another friend on Margaret that had three feet of, uh, water in his basement. His kayak was floating above his, uh, washing machine. Um, we have a serious problem with flooding in this town. Anyone that's involved with the Muir property knows that. Anyone who monitors the Mystic River Watershed Association, any of those folks will tell you there's a problem with it. It's not only deleterious to the environment, it's harmful to human property as well. And there's a direct link between the overnight parking ban and paving of yards and installing pervious surf, impervious surface. And, um, I, I think that's, that's a very serious consideration and it has to be, it has to be in the, in the mix here.
Um, Stroker, I think I accidentally cut you off. Did you? Stroker, I think I accidentally cut you off. Did you finish your statement?
What, where did you cut me off?
I think impervious, you know?
Yeah, that's good enough.
All right. Sorry about that. Yeah. Elaine?
So I just have more of a question. I guess it's a practical question. So you mentioned saying, just for argument's sake, overnight parking goes to the odd side of the street. So currently on Chandler Street, we, daytime parking is permitted on the even side of the street. But there is no parking allowed on the odd side of the street. So it's a one-way street where parking is allowed on the even side. So with your proposal, are you saying that basically non-residents would continue to be able to park on the even side of the street during the day until 1:00 AM? But then residents would park on the odd side of the street? And I guess my question is, is there then also a window of which effectively what I had, what we would experience would be cars on both sides of the street? I'm just not totally, it's more of a question. I just don't understand the, I don't understand how it works. And so I would be just like some clarity on that.
Well, that's a good question. I wasn't aware of that, I mean, as a situation on Chandler Street. I mean, it's certainly something that I, I would need to go back and talk with maybe the chief, if that's Chief Flaherty, if that's the appropriate person. Me or, or someone deep here, certainly my colleagues, and to try to figure this out. And also to figure out if it's more than Chandler Street that this is a situation. I suspect that there is more than one street is the case, and then try to figure out, I mean, a general process or plan or approach, I mean, to handling these.
I guess what I would say, you sort of know where I'm getting, going with this. It seems weird potentially, but then, then does it, then does it take a, I guess my, my thought process is then does it take a street that currently has parking on one side of it, albeit for a limited time, and kind of turn it into parking, to on-street parking for both sides of the street? I could be overthinking it or underthinking it, but it is a question and then would be a concern.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Appreciate you bringing that up. It is something we need to figure out, you know, for not only Chandler Street, like I said, if it hap, if it applies.
Other one-way streets where there's.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank, thank you very much. So as I said, I mean, I'm going to check back with my colleagues, see what they want to say, if they want to say anything. And bring back, and bring the meeting to an official end, respect to being a select board meeting. But I will hang around and see some hands still up. And I'll hang around and listen to people for another hour maximum, because I do have to get up early. Me, so I'll check first with Mr. Helms. Well, actually first, let me check with Chief Flaherty and see if Chief Flaherty wants to say anything.
Thank you very much, Len. I don't have any other comments. Again, happy to support the select board and whatever decision comes out of the pilot.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief Flaherty. And also I want to thank Deputy Town Manager Jim Feeney for attending tonight. He's just been in the background listening and I appreciate his, his interest in listening to the community as well. Thanks to all of you for a really good quality discussion. I have been furiously taking notes. I've been watching the chat. I'm going to capture that, study it. Speaking for myself, I have not made up my mind about this. I think that the board has had some informal discussions. I, this conversation tonight has helped refine in my mind what some of the questions are. And that will help us move forward in whatever decision that we end up making. So I have a lot to think about. I hope that people continue using the feedback form that Len put in or just write to us. Our email addresses are on the town webpage under Select Board. I've been hearing from people. I'm glad, glad for that. So please keep those comments coming. Thank you for a respectful discussion tonight and insightful. And I get the feeling, listening to this, that everyone's here because they love their neighborhood. They love their town. They understand that there are different needs, different priorities, different views. But the tone of this has been encouraging. So I'm grateful for that. And think of us as we, the select board, as we make this very difficult, continue this very difficult, challenging discussion and decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also want to echo Eric's comments to thank everybody for their comments this evening. And, you know, we've had differing views that we've heard and it has given us a lot to think about. And again, for myself, when we started, when Len and I started this process, we, we saw that each layer that, that we tried to address, there, there are a number of different complexities here. And we've still not at a point where we're making a full boat. However, I think there's a lot of, for us to think about before we, we get to that point and a lot to attempt to address. I also think that there are a number of things that just bear in mind that what we are talking about here is, is a pilot and it's a pilot to look, if we go forward, to look at what happens after that pilot period. But also Eric had mentioned something in our last select board meeting that this may allow us to have data to take a look at our hardship exemptions that we have in place right now. Is there data that we're going to get from that? That may cause us to change our criteria for granting exemption? So it's, 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 for me, it's really about trying to, to gain some information, going through a short period. But I've been given a lot to think about from people who are opposed to this. There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. I'm going to work on them, work with my colleagues. And I don't want anybody to leave this meeting to think that this is a done deal. Okay. So to the extent that that came across that it's a done deal, there's still more work to be done on it. I'm going to take the comments very seriously. I may contact a few of you who've commented tonight to talk a little bit more about the concerns. But I appreciate the back and forth and I appreciate everybody participating. I will say, Mr. Chairman, nine o'clock was a hard stop for me, so I'm probably going to be leaving, but.
Yeah, sure. Sure. And so with that, we will take a motion to adjourn the select board part of this. Like I said, stay around folks, meet up. And so I have a motion from, I'll take a motion, Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
And second, Mr. Helms, I have to conduct a vote. So, Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the official select board meeting is adjourned. And so, so, so like I said, I will stay around and take questions. I'm going to, I think I'm going to go to like Darcy? I'm going to do Darcy. Then I'll figure it out. So Darcy next.
Hi. I guess what occurred to me while I was listening to all of this was you already have a waiver program for overnight parking where you allow people to get an overnight parking waiver and they pay for it. And they come to the select board and they, you know, they show a diagram of their driveway or they explain their circumstances with their handicap aunt or whatever. And they ask you guys and you say yes or no. And the, the stats you brought up earlier, you're saying 50, 50, right? But if you look at the reasons why you've said no, it seems to me if you said yes to those people and just like instead of doing a parking pilot, instead of expanding the, you know, waivers that just expand the program that you already have, that you already do, and see how that goes. And if people are asking for, you know, things that you think aren't a good reason, then that should be not a good reason to get a waiver in the future either. But on the other hand, if it's someone who's got, you know, four cars and two parking spaces, maybe you guys want to say yes at this point. I don't know. It's just that I, I feel like it's kind of serious to go from you come, you have your questions, you get asked and you either say yes or no, and you can get an overnight waiver under circumstances, to suddenly saying, well, anybody can get an overnight waiver, really? There, there doesn't seem to be like a, like you're wanting, the pilot seems like a big leap from the current situation when it almost sounds like you could do the current situation, relax things a little and see how that goes. So I, I don't know. I was just thinking about it when people were talking.
Yeah. Well, that, that is essentially how Mr. Hurt, me and John Hurt, another select board member feels about it too. And, and I do too. It's just that I feel that it is less prone to arguments of unequal treatment. I mean, if we say to folks, just give us a reason. We will document the reason and we'll give it to you and then we'll assess. At the end of the pilot, I mean, how these reasons are stacking up, you know? And so, so that's where we are. But essentially, I mean, really what we just really want to do is relax. I mean, the, the requirements so that we can, you know, allow more people that, that we have said no to me for perhaps more borderline situations to get the waivers. So, so does that mean? I don't, you, you, you made a proposition. I responded, I mean, do you want more of a response or?
No, no, I just, as I said, when I was listening to everybody, I suddenly thought, why are we doing this big leap when we could do a smaller one?
Right. Yeah, yeah. So it's mainly the notion of making sure that people, I mean, are, are treated equally. I mean, and so, I mean, initially, I mean, and while not initially, period, it's going to be like first come, first served, I mean, and, and the throughput will be, I mean, what we can handle in, in the office because we're not going to be hiring more people to, to do this. Meaning we'll see, I mean, what kind of demand there is for it, what the reasons are. I mean, and any other complications, I mean, that, that come up as a result of, of trying to do the pilot. Assuming we do, as you, as you, as, as had been made clear, we have not voted on it and it's not a done deal. You know, so, so let's see, I'm going to do it in the order of the hands that I have here. Sure, you're welcome. So I don't know if Jean's hand is still up from the last time. And so I'll, but you let me see. No, it's down. Okay. Andrew?
I noticed Louise Strayhorn has raised her hand, so I'll keep my mouth shut till others have a, have a chance. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm not seeing the hand up. I'm looking at the electronic hands. I mean, so who is it?
Louise Strayhorn. My wife.
I'm not seeing her hand up, you know, so.
Well, I'll be quick if, if I should go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
Mostly, I wanted to just notice that Linwood has a church at one end and a ball field at the other end. That, that's another spot that in my opinion, would, would be no parking. The Capital Square area, those businesses really rely on some parking on the streets. Their customers would be in a, in a position of competing for parking spaces with with residents who don't park there now. I wanted to echo people who had mentioned, I do feel that you can't claw this back after you do a trial. People will have gotten in the habit of parking on the street. They might have accumulated another car in their household. I don't see how you can go backwards. But even more important, I think the change is going to take several years to really take effect. Each month that a few cars are granted, et cetera, et cetera. And so you end up with very few spaces left. And then it's, then we're back to what we have now. It's just instead of not enough space in my driveway, it's not enough space on my street. That's the eventual logical conclusion. And there, there was one, one other thing, but and also I, I got, just, this is just a last comment. For fun, later I'll read it. I discovered that 1925 is when this went into effect or 1924. So at the end, if nobody I'll, I'll offer to read it at the end when everybody's done. But that's, that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay. We're going to take you up on that offer, but we'll see. So Patricia?
Yeah, hi. When I came on earlier, I came into this meeting like a lot of other people, thinking that this pilot was kind of a done deal and we were here to comment on it. If the pilot is not a done deal, then I'm actually kind of against it. I think what we really need to focus on is enforcing the current rules. I live in East Arlington. I can tell you that there's, unless I, unless I'm willing to call the police and rat out my neighbors, I get streets that are impassable. And it doesn't matter daytime or nighttime. They're just, there's people parked on both sides. Streets are narrow. And it's like, I can't imagine trying to get a, a fire truck down there. So, yeah, you know, I, I would like to stick with the ban as is. I lived in Somerville for several years and I had the permit parking. And we had three cars in a two-car driveway so that, that somebody was on the street. And I could tell you, getting a permit doesn't mean you get to park in front of your house. It get, means that you get to park in the city of Somerville. And there were a lot of nights that I didn't go out and do things because I said, I don't want to try to come back at 10 or 11 o'clock at night and maybe be parking two, three, four, five blocks from my house. Because you, because parking on both sides. And there were times when, you know, in winter time, parking was awful. Again, because they don't plow to the, the edges of the sidewalk. They plow to somewhere close by, which makes the streets even narrower. So if this pilot has not actually been approved already, I would be against it. I would be pro enforcing the current rules as they are because, you know, again, we've got somebody that often parks on the opposite side of our street across the driveway. And we get to do a 14-point turn to get into our driveway. So let's keep the rules as is. Let's not go forward with the thing. Andrew made a good point that it would be very hard to claw this back. So, you know, I'm sticking up my hand saying, nope, let's, let's stick with the rules and let's stick with what we have and enforce the rules.
Okay. Thank you, Patricia. So next, what we have two, three firsts here. I think at this point is probably a signal that we will be closing this down soon. So Kelly?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm still tenuously supportive of, of testing something out, but I do have a lot of reservations, as you've already heard. I think the program, whether it's a pilot or whether it's fully implemented, would have to be extremely granular, which is why my support would be contingent on your street address. And otherwise it gets impossible to know. As the woman from Somerville points out, you know, you'll be parking, you know, helter-skelter and all over the place. And the reason for that in part is something you may not have considered, which is that the monthly rate in Boston is about 400 bucks a month. It was approaching 400 a few years ago. I was approached by a friend who wanted to park in my garage and, you know, leave the car and come get it occasionally when they need it because they don't need it very often. Rather than pay 400, they wanted to pay me 100 or 200 to do that. I declined that offer because we have constrained parking and, you know, it's just, it, it does not make sense. That's going to happen in a lot of places in Arlington if you do this. So again, you want to tie it to a very granular program where it's street by street if you're going to allow this so that enforcement, which will be key, understands what the implications are for, for doing some of these things.
No, I appreciate that, you know, and, and indeed, I mean, if the granularity increases the cost, I mean, then that justifies me charging a higher price for the.
Yeah, I mean, you need to enforce. You need to study and all of that comes at a certain cost, right? So if we're going to pay for that with our tax dollars, I would rather see it come from the folks who are using the program, you know, and those, that comes in form of fees.
Yeah. Thanks for that feedback, you know? So, so Elaine, you might be it, because I don't think we're going to let Andrew read. Actually, I need to unmute you. Sorry about that. Yeah, let me unmute you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, sure. Sorry.
No worries. I have run Zoom meetings. It's very hard. So just, sorry, another question for you that's not clear to me. Anyone, so anyone in the town of Arlington can apply for a permit?
Can anyone, so anyone in the town of Arlington can apply for a permit? Um, are permits then reviewed or basically if you apply and can pay, do you get a permit? So in other words, could I apply and um, you know, be declined? Are there criteria around? Like, is applying for a permit basically just, I I apply and I I willing to pay, you know, a dollar a day for these six months and then that permit is accepted and I get a sticker?
Me, right now, that's the thinking. I mean, we haven't come up with any criteria for rejecting anyone. I mean, the about the most we have done in in exploration, I mean, um of declining isn't the word, but if someone were to want more than one, we were thinking that it would be be a higher price in and and um town council has given us a rationale by which we could be just justify that, you know, uh but that's not a declination, that's more just a disincentive me for me, yeah. Uh, but no, we haven't had any discussions about how we uh we decline anyone. But but thinking back to the previous speaker, I guess if you tied the permit though to me, uh, a license, you know, played, you know, a registration, and I think that registration is tied to the place that the person lives, you know, so I think they probably have to jump through some hoops in order to be park a car in Arlington that's not registered in Arlington. But hey, you know, me, people are always good at figuring out a game just about any system, right? You know, so since I referred to you, uh, previous speaker, I have to go back to you, previous speaker. So Kelly, you know. And welcome back to you, Elaine, in case I haven't.
I just had one other question or.
Sure, why don't you go ahead, Elaine, since since you are.
Go ahead, Elaine. So then is there also, okay, so that's the first question. So then is there like, you know, a proposal to um issue, I'm making this up, a hundred permits or five hundred permits? Um, is there like a cap to it or is it basically like anyone who wants, you know? I- is there a cap to the number that you're that you're issuing based on, you know, some um assessment of the amount of burden that a neighborhood could handle? Um, should, you know, I I guess, is there a cap? Is there any kind of thinking about, again, the the capacity that really can be handled?
The short answer is no. You know, uh, me, in theory, yes, you know, and and uh what we figure it out, I don't know. You know, it may really be a matter of how hard it is to figure that out, you know, uh, the sort of the sort of thing that I would like to uh figure out, but I don't have the bandwidth for it now. And and so we could be, is that something that we could either ask? You know, planning to do, me, or Tac, you know, or 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 some other entity, you know, to do. But the short answer is there is no cap um at this point, you know.
Yeah, it is, it, I guess, you know, not to sound like a broken record, but it seems like there are a lot of things that just need to be considered or be out, you know, obviously. And again, back to the, does this mean I now have or there'll now be cars on both sides of the street on a one-way, all that kind of, you know, devil in the detail stuff. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, I hear you. No, appreciate it. That's part of the reason.
Just, just to clarify that parking comment is, what I would do is I would have sought the parking permit, right? Or anybody could do this, seek a parking permit. I would park my car on the street at night and I would rent out my garage to a a Bo- Boston person for two hundred dollars a month.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got you. Okay.
And I would be making a lot more than the three hundred and sixty-five dollars. So, so if I can think to do that, so can everybody else. And, you know, the reason I'm trying to be supportive is um that I have tenants downstairs and I only allow one car parking because I felt it's overburdening both us in terms of tandem parking and also the neighborhood, we're very constrained because we're right near Mass Ave. The the it fills up at seven AM. Boom, if I have a plumber coming, I have to tell him you have to come early, there'll be no parking. You can't fit your truck in my driveway, you know, that kind of thing. So, because you don't want to block other people with repair people too. So it becomes really onerous to maintain not just the roads, but to have daily repairs and just normal functionality. So and I'm I'm not seeking to rent to a Boston person, but there are going to be people and there'll be probably quite a few who take advantage of that type of program uh to do that. So you are gonna see these streets fill up and fill up fast. And that's why it's so important to have the granularity in terms of the parking permits so that you can see what kinds of trends are developing. And it'll be somewhat easier to understand the implications and also to perhaps rein them back in if you needed to at some juncture.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's good. Me, and so, yeah, no, I I I appreciate that, you know, and and well, yeah. I mean, you know, I'll so I'll just kind of tell you all a little bit in closing. So so yeah, I don't have a car. Me, I'm very much pro-transit. Me, I have this notion being of how the whole transportation network should be used as a transit system that we now paid for it as we use it, me, with me, the ability to pay for it, me, being based on me, the affordability, me, now in my world, my world, my ideal world, we're not gonna have me, poor people, you who need to be given a price break on accessing transit system, transit transformation network, me, but reality is that will be the case, at least uh in the near term. You know, and and shared vehicles, no need for me, um, uh, at least as much parking as we have, me, especially if it's a shared vehicles or stored someplace else. Meaning you just kind of use them on an adney basis, you know. But this was, this came out of as 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 Mr. Corsi, Steve pointed out out of uh an article um uh that was in the war and 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 Steve wanted to work on it and I wanted to work on it with him. Me, I per, I don't have any emotional stake in this. Me, even when I do care about something, though, I try to be detached from it because I come into things from a a research basis. So the reason I like doing these kinds of things is that you learn something, you know. So in this forum, we learn a lot, I think, about uh concerns. Me, I am enthusiastic about the notion of doing a pilot, me, because I feel that we will learn something. Me, but we do have to be cognizant of the costs, me, that that will entail, meaning and so so we're gonna take all these comments into consideration, you know, and and I don't know what we're gonna do, you know, uh, and considering this is five of us, you know, and so we'll report back. This is gonna be recorded, me. Uh, if they want to watch, they can watch, me, and and we'll 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 go from there. But but um I I I trust that, you know, that that we do care about this place. Me, it's not that, you know, every decision or action that we take, me, uh, is ultimately the right one, me, but I I do know that I'm the sort of person that if I do something, it's like, oh, that's not working. I'm, I am all too happy to reverse course and go, ah, that's wrong, you know, I mean, what I learned from it, me, and I feel that my colleagues are the same way. So so this is where we are, me, and I really appreciate you taking the time to come out. And I'll say one other thing. A lot of you have written a lot, and I really appreciate all the written and the questions. I have not responded because it's like, uh, it would just take a long time uh to to respond, you know, and I just don't, ain't just so much going on, because as you know, me, we do, we have other jobs in addition to these. You know, but I am tracking them, being at 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 some point, being uh if not verbally, being uh then well, if not written and verbally, hopefully it can get you an answer to most of your questions. But do appreciate you sending the questions and they're not being ignored, you know, uh, they're being read.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you wanted to send a snail mail comment, because I do know elderly people in the street who have comments and I'm I'm gonna usually try to embed them, but they're not gonna be on Zoom calls. So i- is there just, the mailing address is just the select board in town of Arlington or town hall or?
So you want to send them, they also post to email?
Yeah, or email. It's fine, too. I can help them.
Yeah, uh, so so for email, I mean, you can, yeah, well, all of our email addresses are on the website, but you said they don't have that. Well, they get to Zoom.
No, I can pull them off for them.
Okay, yeah, and then you can.
If it's on the website, that's all I need.
Yeah, yeah, and you can send to S B admin, I mean, at town of Arlington, I mean, the US, and they'll get to uh administrators and they'll send them all to us. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Sure. All right. So so it was good of you to cut me off, because I need to stop talking. No, I need to stop talking. It's because I I do need to get home, because uh, all right, planning meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. So so thank you, everybody, you know, and feel free, uh, stay in touch. All right?
Thanks for hearing us out.
Welcome.
Thank you.